And welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, April 20th at 7:00 PM. Tonight, we have two events going on. The first of which is a public hearing for our Community Development Block Grant, known as the CDBG program. And I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Grace, who was the council member who introduced that legislation through council just last, or two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, President Nisley. Yes, tonight is just the second public hearing where there's an opportunity for members of council or members of the public to discuss projects. And council has already approved the ordinance allowing the city to apply for the CDBG funds. And I believe that sort of our top priority project, should we receive the funding, is some accessibility improvements on the west side with Washington Street and Schaefer Street, and possibly some lighting improvements over there as well. Are there any members of council or Mr. Mayor, anyone who would like to make any comments on this? Yes, Member Paul Talter?
I absolutely agree that making those streets more accessible would benefit a lot of our citizens, but I do hope that improving the lighting on West Washington Street in particular, and hopefully also on Schaefer, becomes one of the top priorities. I hope that it's not, you know, a thing we could do if everything works out well, but actually is a core part of the project.
Thank you. Yes, Member Paul? And while we are talking about CDBG funding, we have, this is a wonderful opportunity to remind everyone, if you have not yet already completed your census, please, please do so. Census counts are really vital for funding for projects like this. And I haven't checked recently, does anyone know the current response rate for the county? Mr. Mayor?
I can't speak for the county, but I can speak for the city of Athens, that in some of our non-student dense precincts, I believe the numbers are running in the 40% to 50% level. That was as of midweek, but what I can report is that the student precincts range anywhere from 25% up to 35%. I think somewhere in that range. Certainly working with Ohio University to get those numbers up as well. Well, maybe I'll just save this for when I report out issues, but it's census 2020 related.
Yeah, we don't want to get too far off the CDBG, but all of those, all of those census responses do then influence us, the numbers, and for this program, we're eligible to apply for $150,000 for this CDBG block grant.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public?
No indications from Scott that we have any other comments. And Debbie, have we received any written comments through email? No, okay.
Okay, thank you, and we look forward to hearing how the process goes.
Okay. Well, if no other, no additional comments, then we will say that this public hearing, the second public hearing for the CDBG block, the block grant program is closed at 7:07 PM. Now, what we'd like to do is open our business meeting for city council with establishing the quorum as the first item of business, and all members are present tonight. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held on April 6th. I can have a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved, thank you. We now have communications. Do we have any communications that council members want to share with us? Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd just like to remind the public and council that the auditor mayor's meeting on Tuesdays at 3:00 PM continue online during this crisis, and at times, more than half of the Finance and Personnel Committee members are in attendance, so the public should know that we are conducting those meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other communications? If not, we'll move on to see if communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason?
No, no communication.
Okay. Mayor Patterson?
Thank you, President Nisley. I have a couple of communications. One is that we do have two dumpsters down at the service garage at, on West State Street. At the service garage, those dumpsters are there for people to discard unwanted things. They can use those dumpsters. We are not checking to see that you have, you know, proof of city residency at this point, because we're not going to staff it. We're just asking people to go ahead and throw whatever it is they're trying to discard during spring cleaning week, to go ahead and put it in those two dumpsters. They can pull in when the gates open. The gate is open, I believe, from 7:00 to 4:00, or let's just be safe, 7:30 to 4:00, but come on down and you can drop that stuff off. Another thing that we will be doing is in working with several of the landlords, been holding several landlord meetings with some of our larger multi-unit facilities and landlords to where during the week of move out slash move in here in the city of Athens for off-campus housing, we will be deploying several dumpsters throughout the high-density areas, so there's a place to put things that are to be discarded and trash and things of that nature. We have been messaging to the off-campus students through the landlords, as well as through Barb Harrison at OU with off-campus, off-campus student housing, to take as much of their belongings home with them. As is typical every year, they typically leave behind, you know, coffee tables, nightstands, lamps, things like that, sometimes full-blown beds and mattresses. We're asking them to take them home with them. Can goods and non-perishables can be donated to the food pantry, so that is doable. I do understand that Habitat for Humanity, the restore will be picking up, or not picking up, they won't be picking up anything, they will allow for drop-off on West Union or out at the Habitat facility in Chancy, so they will be receiving reusable items. The other thing I wanted to share with council and the viewing audience is that I received something a couple of weeks ago, this is related to move out. And this is critical. This is critical for all who are watching. And what I want to show is a slide presentation that Dr. Ken Johnson had put together. I can get this to come up. Can council see that, okay?
Yes.
I will go full screen with it. So as I mentioned, this was put together by Ken Johnson, Chief Medical Officer at the Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine at Ohio University, and this really kind of came on the heels of my raising a high level of concern, or a level of concern over the number of individuals who will be coming into Athens between the May 1st to May 10th timeframe for move out as well as move in. This is the, basically the curve that most of us have seen, for those of you who watch Amy Acton, when she reports out things going on. So this was the original curve. Here is the modified curve, and this, keep in mind, this is two weeks old now, but this is looking at the way that the state of Ohio has flattened this curve out, projected peak of 2,000 new cases per day. I don't believe we're anywhere near that at this point, again, but this is modeled data. Let me back up. This is the one I want everyone to take a close look at, so.
Can I interrupt? Mine's not moving or anything.
Nor is mine, yeah. They're not advancing, Steve.
It's not advancing.
We can only see the cover page.
So if you can just refer to the numbered slide, we can take a look at the graphic, and that'll help us.
Well, we can't, I can't get into that one either.
Well, let me, let me back this out.
Okay, sorry.
Well, there's the first slide.
Let me do this the old-fashioned way. Back to Professor 101.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so this is what I was telling you, was an early projection of what would be needed to flatten the curve, to reduce the impact on the hospital system throughout, systems throughout the state. This is the important one, so I'm going to cut straight to this particular slide. If you look carefully, and I'm kind of struggling seeing this, but I'll do my best. If you look carefully at this, you'll see that what Dr. Johnson has put on here is suggested early move out is the 26th, 28th timeframe, the most leases end on the 1st of May, and then students move out, and then they prep the apartments and then have a large influx for move in, typically the tail end of that week. We have yet to see how that's really going to play out, to see how many people actually move in, but move out is mandatory unless you're staying in the same apartment for a period of time. So if you look at this, and looking at that curve, you'll note that during that move-out period, even though it looks like we're on the downslope, it's still near the peak. And so that's, that's the issue that I wanted to raise with council, just to raise your level of awareness. Look at it in comparison to the end of June, or the end of May, into June 1st, would be, risk would be significantly less. That doesn't mean there couldn't be a flare-up, because that could happen. But the reason I'm sharing that with council and with the viewing audience, I'm going to go ahead and back out of this, is that, is that I would really like to reach out to those who are viewing, to a lot of our permanent citizens throughout the various wards, and ask them, you know, to really consider, you know, going out and purchasing groceries, other sundries you might need, toiletries, all those good things, just things, you know, prior to the first, you know, probably somewhere in the 24th, 26th range, purchase the things that you need. And I would ask everyone who's watching to really exercise a lot of, a lot of extra caution, and stay in place, shelter in place, you know, stay at home even more than we have already. I know it's hard, trust me. With two eight-year-old twin daughters running around, it's not easy, and I get it. But the more we can protect ourselves over that timeframe, because that is the timeframe in which we'll have a lot of individuals coming from across the state, across state lines, across the US, not knowing where they're coming from, and just, and coming to get their things, but also coming to move in. I just want everyone to be aware of that. I also want people to be as careful as possible, I want people to protect themselves as best as possible. I'm also working, like I said, with Ohio University and with the landlords on the flip side, to make sure we can get this done smoothly. There was success last week in that Dr. Amy Acton, again, I've mentioned this before, but she's my hero, as well as the mayor, or the governor, well, the mayor too, the governor, who the governor is doing a fine job, as well as the chancellor, the chancellor for higher ed, they have come out with a guideline that is signed by Dr. Acton and Chancellor Gardner, and it basically lists through the things that people who are moving out should be doing. Most notably, that's on here, is wearing a cloth mask, wear a cloth mask, maintain social dis, physical distancing, practice good hygiene, covering your mouth when you cough, all those things that we all know we should be doing. Don't let anybody help you if they're not feeling well, and I don't care how they're feeling, even if you're hungover, I don't want you helping anybody. Be smart. And the other thing is frequently touch surfaces, making sure that those are wiped down, sanitized, doorknobs, steering wheels, everything that you are touching. The last thing, and that's not in this order, it's the last thing for anybody who will be involved in the moving out of people, of individuals, is to make sure that you're bringing your own cleaning supplies, don't decide that you need to rush down to Kroger or Wal-Mart because you forgot 409 or something like that. You know, bring your own stuff, bring your own stuff, return with your own stuff in order to keep things safe. We have, we're holding it three positive cases and one fatality. We've been doing that since March 29th. That is, those are, that's a wonderful number to hear, that it stays at that. What I really want to see is this doesn't flare up during that timeframe that I have just mentioned to you. I'm hoping that we can keep this as long as we possibly can, and maybe through the other end at three, which will be phenomenal, but it's going to take us, it's going to take all of us working together to make sure we can get that done. President Nisley, that pretty much covers what I wanted to mention to the viewing audience and to council tonight.
Thanks, okay. And very important information. We'll move on now to ordinances for second reading. And I'll read through the title, and then also just pause briefly to ask if there are any comments or questions. 5220 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, known as NOPEC, in order to accept NOPEC energized community NEC grants, and this is introduced by all members of council. And if no comments or questions, I will move on to 5420. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary for construction and construction engineering of the Simpson Avenue improvements. This is project number 315, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. If no questions or comments, I'll move on to now our ordinances for first reading. 5620 is an ordinance to ensure local match funds for the Mobility Manager Grant, and is introduced by Councilmember Kotsas.
President Nisley, thank you. And yes, I want to thank Jesse Smithser for tuning in last week and giving us a presentation and an update on transit in the county. This, once again, is our annual request for $7,500 to help match a couple different partners, including the Athens County Board of Developmental Disabilities and Athens County Children's Services, to help fund the position of Mobility Manager for the county.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to ordinance 5820. And this is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a temporary right-of-way agreement, right-of-entry, excuse me, agreement with Kimes Convalescence Center Limited as part of the Kimes Reservoir Project Number 324, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. I just wanted to mention, before I go into this, that I think we skipped 5720?
Yes, we did.
Should I go ahead with 5820?
No, let's, let's go back, let's go back and get 5720. I handwrote in the number from where it had printed. 5720 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a water agreement with Aliax Regional Water District, to release upon annexation certain property within their service area to the city of Athens, introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. One of the many steps that you go through, which has public hearings and meetings and opportunities for the public to take part about the development of affordable housing over by Lee, by Lurig Road. And so this is one of the things that we have to do, is to establish an agreement between current water source to our city water source, because annexed areas do have city water. And so this is a process that we've gone through multiple times, so contractual, thank you.
Any comments or questions? Okay, now back to 5820. Thank you, Member Grace. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a temporary right-of-entry agreement with Kimes Convalescence Center Limited as part of the Kimes Reservoir Project Number 324, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. And for this ordinance, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you. And the reason for the suspension is that we need to move forward with the necessary testing in order to determine the appropriate location for the new booster center, and so the sooner we can have a signed agreement, the sooner this work could progress.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules for ordinance 5820. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries, and the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. And I'll just read the wherethes, and that is, whereas moving the Kimes Reservoir Booster, Water Booster Station to a lower elevation would improve pump suction pressure and allow the city to serve more areas to the south and west, and whereas the city of Athens needs to perform soil borings on property owned by the Kimes Convalescence Center LTD, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into a temporary right-of-entry agreement with Kimes Convalescence Center LTD, a copy of which is attached here too, and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens in order to meet project completion, community development, block grant deadlines, and it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor. And I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approving this ordinance. Do we have any comments or questions? Okay. And I'm not seeing that there's any indication that we have any comments from the public either, no. So our director would be providing us information via the chat box, so, okay. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 5920 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. We have two items for appropriation for tonight. One is for a grant that the municipal court received from the Supreme Court of Ohio, and I will go ahead and read that. This is, again, money coming from outside the city, not from our own pockets. And the 2020 Appropriation Ordinance 13019 is hereby amended by appropriating the following sum from the unappropriated balance, $54,038 to Clerk of Court's Computer Fund 231, transaction code 300, and $22,184,000 to transaction code 500 for a remote technology grant award from the Supreme Court of Ohio. The other item we have tonight for appropriations are refunds being done through the Recreation Department, Arts Parks and Recreation. And this section of the appropriation ordinance reads as follow, follows, "The 2020 Appropriation Ordinance 13019 is hereby amended to decrease and increase the following appropriations: Decrease Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 500, equipment by $2,000; and increase, transaction code 600, refunds by same amount; and decrease Community Center Fund 271, transaction code 500, equipment by $2,000; and increase, transaction code 600, refunds by said at same amount, and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by the set amount." Thank you, President Nisley.
Thank you. Any comments or, any comments or questions? All right, then this is, and we don't need to suspend on this, I don't think.
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ordinance 6020 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract for municipal refuse recycling and compost, introduced by all members of council. And Councilmember Crowell, if you would like to lead us off in the discussion?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So ordinance 06020 authorizes our Service Safety Director to enter into a new contract for our recycling and refuse service. And part of the bid process for the companies that bid on this contract were also to provide an alternate for possible composting services. I would like to encourage council members, as well as anyone joining us from the public tonight, to, to let us know your thoughts on all three areas of this contract. The Section 1 of the ordinance reads, "The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into a written contract for municipal refuse, recycling, and composting for a three-year term, effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023, with the lowest and best bidder as advertised pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 735.05. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $1,682,692 annually from garbage fund, 76636, transaction code 300, for said purposes." Now, I will note that this contract has gone up, the expenses have gone up for these services. Not only have the healthcare costs gone up for these bidders, Athens Hocking Recycling Centers were, had the lowest bid, and were deemed to also have the best bid for these services. And I am recommending that we include the curbside composting in this contract. I do so because I think the benefits of moving in the direction of keeping our organic waste out of our landfill, where it does produce methane gas, a gas much more dangerous than carbon dioxide as a greenhouse gas in the atmosphere. I realize that not a lot of communities do this, but I do think it's a very necessary step. And Athens, as with recycling, has been at the forefront of some of these movements. Now we see that recycling is fairly common across the world, if not across the state of Ohio. The recycling fee in the city of Athens has been required of all residents for many decades now, and that is a requirement in order to encourage as many citizens as possible to engage with that service. So we do all pay for it, whether we recycle or not. And that would be the same with this composting fee, that we are offering this service to residents. I have been contacted by a number of people who are interested in the composting service. Some of them were part of the original pilot program, but when the city was no longer able to subsidize that program, and the residents had to pay for the program individually, the costs were too expensive, and they pulled out of that program. They were very interested in continuing a curbside composting program if the program was more affordable. The program for approximately 95 citizens, residents, who decided to stay with the program was approximately $20 a month, 1980-something, I believe. And... And we have been able to reduce those costs to approximately $3 per account for all residents in the city. Now, myself, I have backyard composting and I enjoy doing that. And I also use the soil amendment that that produces in our tomato beds and our other flower beds in our gardens. And I can plan on continuing to do that. My family plans on continuing to do that. But obviously, I will be paying the fee for the curbside compost pickup, which I would not be utilizing. And I support it because there are a number of residents in the city who don't have the option of backyard composting or do not want to do that. And they like that, as with their other waste streams, they like that someone will come weekly and remove those. I think like recycling, it will take some behavior change and it will take some time for residents to see the benefits of doing this. And it's, it's, obviously has made our rates go up. Now, it's not the only part of this contract that has made our rates go up. As I mentioned, there are additional costs that the service provider has indicated that meant they had to raise the price to do the services even without composting. And so we need these services to be done. The city council can choose to decide to subsidize clearly from other funds in the city to lessen the burden on individual residents. I know that currently, the revenue that we bring in from tax, income tax, and from our water sewer and recreation fund and parking have been affected certainly by the current crisis. So our balances are a little bit unsure going forward. And I also realize, on the other hand, that there are many residents who are severely impacted by this crisis themselves. And so this increase particularly hits them at a very bad time. So we have asked the city auditor to look into the balance that is available in the current garbage fund to see how we might offset some of those cost increases in the near term. I did have one resident contact me to request that any increases be put off until January 1st in order to help those who are particularly suffering during this crisis. And I don't believe Auditor Hecht is with us today, but perhaps the mayor or someone with other information can speak to this, that I believe that there is a balance in the garbage fund that might be used to offset these costs initially. Now, I do want to, you know, do want to say that that doesn't offset these permanently, that the ordinance has written, proposes that these rates be increased and to pay for the contract that does include composting. And whether that happens, whether those rates kick in January 1st or in one year's time, depending on the amount of money we want to subsidize these costs initially, that's up for discussion. So that is the ordinance. That is some of the recommendations that we've received from the Code Enforcement Director and that City Council discussed in commission. And I'm interested in, in council's thoughts on, on both the subsidization as well as the rest of the ordinance going forward.
And I will share with you that after council members are finished, we do have one public comment.
Okay, great. Member Reisner?
Concerning the proposed rate increases that you're commenting on, that's in the next ordinance coming up, 61, is that correct? The ordinance before...
There are a couple, yeah. On our, on our drive here, we have a couple together. We have 60 is really just authorizing us. So you are correct, Member Reisner. We really are just talking about entering into the contract with Athens Hocking Recycling Centers. So perhaps, and you are right in saying so, we should stick to discussing that first. So any comments on specifically entering into the contract for the amount stated? Member Fall?
Thank you. I think that it should be emphasized that even though some people have very little garbage because they're really good at either recycling, reusing, or reducing, but those people are also required to pay the minimum for garbage pickup, as all other people are. And the same with our water rates and those sort of things is that there's a base that we, that we have to say, this is the base and this is what everybody pays because it's an important public service that keeps the public health high in our area. And so it's a public good and we should all pay a base amount. And that should also be said about things like recycling, you know, reducing water use and those sort of things because those affect us in the long run when we don't address those sort of issues. And I think that composting and those issues are something that we have to address, especially in this year that we have deemed a climate emergency, which is pretty ironic because how many emergencies can we have? So I think that that's probably what we need to look at is that we do it because it's a public service and it has a public good. And everybody supports those public services, hopefully. Thank you.
So President Nisley, oh, Member Cottes.
Yes, Member Crowell, thank you. And, and, you know, and I just want to just convey some of the stuff that I've, you know, been witnessing through, through business and, and also just some conversations that I've had with, you know, with, with other, with other business people and just knowing that this is, this is an extremely challenging time. I think that a lot of, a lot of employees have been, have been laid off right now, which impacts our, you know, our payroll taxes. So I would, I would definitely say at this point that even though, you know, and I do agree that, that we do need to go in this direction of, of encouraging composting and trying to make it, you know, the next, you know, the next addition to, to our trash services to, you know, to be, to be sustainable in the future. I wonder if this is, is the, is the time to go full bore with the, with the complete package. You know, I've, through, through conversation with one of my bankers, they, they were estimating one in, one in five businesses will fail. And I also think of the Court Street in the Uptown area where if you're not prepared for a slow summer, you know, we've already seen businesses close while, you know, we were going to have a slow summer along with two additional months, you know, on the, on the front end. So, you know, I would, I would love to see, you know, the city also take a similar hit like the, like the businesses are in hopes that in the long term that we will, can kind of protect everybody. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Cottes. Yes, President Nisley?
Do we have any more comments about the contract itself? I agree, let's finish that. If no comments with that, I'll go ahead and read 6120. Okay, then, to move forward with that? Okay.
Member Reisner has a comment.
Well, yes, an observation. I just noticed on my Zoom, two chat messages that just came through asking questions.
We'll read those when we get to 6120. Yeah, thank you.
May I just say, President...
They really apply to 6120. I think they're more, what we're talking about now. One's about composting and the other is about, well, I guess one of them could be...
Well, I can, I can go ahead and share them. Yeah, the, the first one is a comment that, this is from Lori McKnight. She says, "I feel that at this time, due to the significant increase in garbage and recycling, that at this time to add on compost is not advisable. We talk about affordable housing, but we need to consider the cost of adding compost under the large increase. It's just not feasible for our low-income populations. I understand the importance of composting and I myself compost at home. However, I do not find that we should be charging people who might not have this additional expenditure, especially at this time when our community has such a high unemployment rate with COVID-19." Another comment came in. That one's from Lori. Oh, okay. And then, "I don't feel that people who are not wanting to need, or needing composting at home should be made to pay for the service." And then a second comment from Raimi McCarrow. "I appreciate the more complete explanation of the compost portion of the new contract. However, I would appreciate more information on what the process involves, what additional costs I would incur to start composting. Thus far, I've been unable to find any information on the city website, or unless I missed it, in a local paper on what the city plans to actually do to put this in effect. Thanks for your time." So those are the two public comments.
President Nisley?
Oh, sorry. Okay, yeah. Yes. Me? Go ahead, yes. Sam's really conducting the ruling, so he called on you. So I'll let you two talk.
If I may, I'd like to respond to Raimi McCarrow's question. At least in terms of how the city initially began the curbside composting program. I was one of the very first participants and I incurred no costs in terms of buying materials or anything. The city gave me a five-gallon bucket with a lid, a tight-fitting lid, and gave me instructions on what to compost that were, the instructions were very clear, easy to understand. I put them on my refrigerator for a while until I got the hang of it. The compost was picked up the same morning as my trash and recycling. I just put, you know, three bins out if I needed to put all three. The bill was attached to my water bill, basically, where we are also charged for trash and recycling. It was all made very simple and I was initially kind of shocked by how much composting reduced the amount of trash I was putting out. And I, I, I don't think I'm a particularly wasteful person. Like, I didn't even realize what a difference that would make in volume. And I got to the point through recycling and composting that I was only putting out one small trash can about every five weeks, as opposed to about every two before that. So I throw that out there and maybe we can revisit that point in the following discussion. But thank you.
Thank you, Member Claude Felder. My system, okay, now I'm back. Anyone else from council who would like to comment on this? Or President Nisley, any other chats that you would like to read during this portion of the meeting?
Nothing else has come in.
Okay. I will just note that the, as this ordinance is, is discussing, the contract is for almost $1.7 million and composting represents about $140,000 within that contract. So there are increases in this contract that are unrelated to composting, just so the public knows, that we have to figure out those increases. Without compost, of course, they are, they are higher increases with the composting, but there still are increases to pay for the higher contract.
Okay.
Any further, Mayor, would you like to say something? Yeah, I just want to alert council that currently in the garbage fund, the unappropriate The current appropriation is, is $1.6 million. And the contract, as you had just indicated, Councilmember Crowell, is $1,682,692. So from the unappropriated, one of the things we're going to have to work through is with this contract, an increase in that. So basically, in the unappropriated balance, what we're looking at is $151,340. I know that we did talk about ways in which we could continue to subsidize, and I should go back to Councilmember Claude Felder when you were talking about the pilot program of composting. That was also subsidized. That's why it was free at the time. It was subsidized from the garbage fund because the money was there. So that all said, we still have some more work to do. We can explore different ways to go about getting these, getting the rates through. I, too, am sympathetic, truly sympathetic with that increase now of the worst of times possible. But we will continue to explore. I'll work with the auditor as well as finance and personnel to see what we can do, what levers we have at our disposal to pull. Thank you, Mayor. And I will just, oh, yes, Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Crowell. I just wanted to put out there so that it's, it's clear for everyone who may be watching or listening that for the residential users, the, the increase for composting, whether, whether we, and we could still choose to go forward without it, my, my preference is that we include composting in the contract. I think it is by far the, the best for our environment and, but, but the cost is, is just about $3.30 per month per household. And so it's, it's certainly not the, the only increase and it's not, not negligible, but it's not the bulk of the increase in the contract.
Thank you, Member Grace. I'll also note that one of the issues that came up, and another Far East Side resident and I had a number of emails regarding the equity of our trash can size. The city of Athens does have a pay-as-you-throw system in that we pay less for having one can than we do for having two cans. So the more solid waste you are producing in your household, if you need an extra can, then you are paying more. So of course, the overall goal is to reduce the amount of solid waste that we are sending to the landfill, which is where we have many environmental problems. So that's one of the reasons why we removed the recycling. And this is another reason that I propose we have composting pickup so that we can remove that food waste. And then we could have many households on a one-container system and they would be paying a lower rate. Now, the subject, the, the reason why I brought this up again is because, as everyone knows, we purchase our own containers at home. And so I might have a certain size, a certain gallon, a 30-gallon container, and my neighbor might have a 60-gallon container. And, and we consider that one container. One of the proposals to make all of Athens more equitable was to have the city purchase containers, 35-gallon containers, much like the large blue recycling containers that we have. And those containers would be spread to every residence. So it is equitable. We did decide at this time not to include that charge within the new rates because of the concerns over the increases. However, that makes a lot of sense and what I'm hearing from residents, that many of them would appreciate having such a system where we have equitable containers. Thank you. Yes, Member Fall?
Great. I think that the containers is, is a important topic to consider because right now we have many landlords who provide really flimsy garbage cans, even though they're supposed to be a, an attached lid to reduce the amount of solid waste that is blowing through all our neighborhoods. So I think that's a really important aspect of that equity, too. I think the other thing is, is that reducing the amount of compostable waste in our garbage stream also helps to reduce the amount of money that we spend on getting rid of our waste because we reduce the amount of solid waste tonnage because we are diverting that into a system. And so I would argue that... And so I would argue that actually $3, right at this point, is more of an investment because the more we divert from the system, the cheaper it is because there's only going to be up in those garbage rates at the dump. And if we recycle and reduce and reuse and we reduce that stream, we won't be paying those increased tipping rates. So it's more, you know, it's something to be looked at as not only a cost, but it can produce a public benefit at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Fall. Yes, we here in southeastern Ohio, we're both blessed, and we are stuck with low landfill tipping fees. However, I do know that just in 2019, those tipping fees went up 8%. So the costs are going up. In some other states, landfill fees are very expensive, and residents pay much more per month to throw away their waste because they have to pay for those landfill tipping fees. Here in southeastern Ohio, they're a little bit less, yet we still want to reduce those. Yes, Member Claude Felder?
Just to emphasize or further emphasize what you were just saying, Member Crowell, maybe it's worth also pointing out to the public that the landfill that the solid waste from the city of Athens goes to is private. So the city has no control over those increased costs at the dump. We just have to pay them. And yes, Member Fall's point is excellent that... And I was sort of trying to allude to this earlier as well, that by composting more of our waste and using it as a soil amendment eventually, we would be reducing the amount of trash that we have to pay costs or paid to get put into the landfill. And we have no ability to control those costs. As Member Crowell just said, in other states, people pay much higher rates. If the owner of the dump decided to raise the rates, we would kind of just have to pay them or haul our trash much further away. So, and that, you know, continuing to recycle, maybe even trying to increase the recycling that happens, and adding composting gives us a little bit of padding against current and future increases to tipping fees at the privately-owned landfill.
Member Fall?
Up Lancaster's tipping fees, that what they pay for garbage rates is $16.50 for residents, meaning more than one trash cart. They request a second trash cart for a one-time fee of $25 and an additional $3 per month service fee for that. So they're paying $16.50 per month if you have one garbage can. And that's only garbage. No recycling, no, nothing else, just garbage. They have no recycling and stuff, from what I understand. So...
So we're getting a little bit into the next ordinance, which is the specific rates.
Sorry.
But it's all right. All of these things are related. So I think if the information is out there and we're having them. I believe there's additional chats, but Member Smedley wanted to join in.
I just wanted to say that I hear all the points about the value of composting and the need to divert our trash in that way. I also want to say that I hear the points about the concern of the financial impact this will have on people and their monthly budgets. You know, trash and recycling you cannot do on your own, on your own property, but composting you can for free. And so the... I just wanted to say that I hear that and I understand that and appreciate that. Certainly, at a different time, I'd be more all about doing the curbside composting. But given our current circumstances, I am very interested in hearing what the mayor is going to be able to find out in terms of either postponing the increase in this time to help those people out. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, President Nisley, are there additional comments that...
There's the one about the rates. Heather Lothlin wrote, "Hello, I'd like to comment, as I have on emails this week. I'm very against this huge garbage hike. 70% is unaffordable by many people in the city of Athens. We have water and sewer increases and the school tax. I really think the council has to look at the fact that many people and people on fixed income can't afford all these increases."
Thank you, President Nisley, and thank you, Heather. That's a very good point. I don't think we've noted yet that one of the proposals for this contract has a 25% deduction for people over the age of 65 or those on fixed incomes. So we have considered that.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready for 6120? If so, I'll read that ordinance. And this is 6120 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established: Solid Waste Recycling and Composting Rates, Introduced by All Members of Council.
Shall I go ahead, President Nisley?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, this is specifically adopting new fees within our Chapter 1 of our code of ordinances. And it does... We have been paying a recycling support fee of $3.50 per unit, and that rate has stayed the same since 2010, when it was increased by $1. And then, we also, the rates in 2010 were raised to $6.50 for one container and $12 for two containers. And for most of us in the city of Athens, in a single household or a single-family household, that one container rate would be $6.50 plus the $3.50 is $10, and it would be going to $16. And that included in that $16 is an approximately $3 fee for composting. So just to get back to some of the original points, the overall contract to have our solid waste picked up at our curbside has increased. So in order, unless we subsidize from other monies in the city, in order to pay for this contract, the increases will have to be at least from $10 to $13. And we are proposing that that go to $16 and include a new service of composting. There are other rates written out depending on how many different rental... Whether it's a rental unit or apartments, rooming houses, condominiums, fraternities and sororities, which is really based on the permit that they have for occupancy. So it's really spread out amongst the people within the house. And I'm not going to read through all these different rates. But I will say, within the owner-occupied units, once again, this would be increasing from $10 to $16, but that does include a new service of composting. That's for a single container. And for two containers per week, it is going from $15.50 to $26.50. And that is the bulk of the ordinance. There are a few additional changes. In order to add extra bags at the curb, that change is being proposed from $3 to $5. Initially, this increase was necessary for the additional revenues that keep us afloat in the garbage fund. We also would like to encourage fewer extra bags. Again, this is sort of a pay-as-you-throw, and we'd like to discourage solid waste going to the landfill. We'd like to encourage more recycling and possibly composting. And that is one of the reasons why the bags at the curb have been proposed to increase from $3 to $5. Also, special halls have changed. It used to be a minimum charge for up to four cubic yards was $25. This might be a mattress or a sofa being left out at off-campus move-out, perhaps. They have now proposed, code enforcement has proposed, a charge for cubic yard. So one cubic yard would be $15. And that is the end of the main changes to the rates for recycling solid waste and then the addition of composting. Any comments on specifically the rates in ordinance 61?
Me?
Yes, Reisner, Member Reisner?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really concerned about raising the rates at this time. I know it's necessary, and of course, we've been hit by a perfect storm of issues here. I like to throw this out for consideration. I'm not proposing an amendment at this time, but consideration. That one, we do not subsidize. The $100,000 that we have in the garbage fund stays there. It's so insignificant, it's not going to have any impact really that's useful, and it could be useful for the city for an emergency. We don't know what we're getting into this year. The second thing would be that the rates would increase by a third, starting January 1st, 2021. And then the next year, another third, and then the last year, the full amount would be realized. I have no idea what economic impact that would have. I've seen no analysis from anybody how that would affect, but I think it's something we need to consider. I really think, you know, 60%, 70% rate increase starting July 1st, that's a hell of a shock. And I really think we need to take that into consideration. I know it'll be hard as hell for the city to manage this. And I don't like the... I don't even like suggesting it. I really think we need to pay our way, but I think we need to give people a break at the moment. I mean, it's time for sacrifice. Well, it's time to sacrifice. We tighten our belt. We make some unpleasant decisions somewhere along the line. It may mean, frankly, it may mean some layoffs somewhere in some departments. I mean, let's just put that out there. It could come to that. And, you know, we're going to have to look at that. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else from city council? Yes, Member Kotzis?
Member Crowell, thank you. You know, and I just, you know, I just did a little, a little simple math, you know, working with 5,000 accounts. One could argue that this is, this will be $360,000 that won't go into the local economy. You know, the other thing that I think about is I do think about the, you know, the workers that are currently laid off, and now they're saddled with additional increases. If they have to now be responsible for their health care, that's much more than $3 a month that they are, that they're already thinking about trying to cover. So I really want to be very cognizant of the, you know, the current situation. And, you know, and I do understand that this is something that we've been working on for a while, but I think, just like everything else right now, it's a moving target. And I think that we need to think about some modification, you know, whether we come to a different agreement or not. But I think it's just, we do need to challenge ourselves and see if there's additional things that we can do to kind of stop them from blowing. Thank you.
Other members of council? Yes, Member Claude Felder?
I also share the concern of giving people a huge increase in shock right now. I mean, I think we all agree this is the worst possible time to do that. I would, you know, I look forward to discussions or for learning more information from the city about how maybe we could step this increase in gradually, if there's any aspect of the contract that we might still be able to negotiate. I don't know, but trash is something a city has to do. It just is. Otherwise, it creates a huge public health hazard if it piles up at people's homes. So we have to, we have to figure out some way to make this happen. And hopefully, as a city, we could do, we can figure out how to handle these increased costs that we're going to have to pay as a city to have trash and recycling hauled away and, you know, possibly composting as well. But one way or another, I mean, it's just a horrible time to have this contract come up for renewal and have these increases facing us as a community.
Thank you, Member Claude Felder. I certainly agree. It does sound like we are split between a number of different issues. Adding composting, how we deal with the increases to the rates. As Member Claude Felder said, come July 1, our trash is still going to need to be picked up. So we have this contract from the lowest and the best bidder. And I guess we can think about some of the options that the Director of Code Enforcement put together for us. Member Reisner did mention not wanting to subsidize. And I understand his point about not wanting to deplete the garbage fund that might be needed in case of emergency or other reason. Yet, we're still going to have to pay the contract with AHRC. So if we slowly raise the fees over the initial period, we're going to have to find the money elsewhere in order to pay the contract. So we certainly have some more things to consider here. President Nisley, are there additional comments? Or is that the same number? I only see a six. Or maybe Mayor Patterson? Yes, Mayor?
Councilmember Grace, she had her hand up as well.
Okay, sorry. Member Grace?
Thank you, Mayor, and Member Crowell. I, you know, listening to the comments from our residents and the emails that we've received in the past week and listening to this discussion, all of this is absolutely true and valid. Like, it's a horrible time to raise rates for our residents, but it's also a time where the city is going to be facing tougher and tougher budget decisions. And as Member Claude Felder said, we have to provide this service. And if, I mean, we don't have to include composting. That could certainly reduce the amount a bit. But I think trying to figure out what other funds we would pull the money from if we don't implement some rate increase, we have to be able to pay the bill to AHRC. And stretching it out over three years means we have to find the money from another fund. And I think that the city... We, as council and residents of our city and city administration, we are all looking at a situation where we may be facing some really long-term impacts. You know, those who are unemployed this year will not be paying income tax next year. This is not a financial situation that will be over in September or even a year from now, I don't believe. I think we're going to be dealing with financial implications of this current situation for quite some time. And so I just want my fellow members of council and any members of the public to think about the fact that it's all, it's going to be a balancing act for many, many different decisions. And while we're talking about one particular service right now, covering the cost of that service means that the city and residents, that the funds won't be there for other options. And... that, that the funds won't be there for other options. And, and if, like, and also the funds that we pay to AHRC, that, that goes to members of our community. The people who work there live, live here in, at least in our county, most likely. And we value those members of our community and paying them a living wage. And so it's questions, questions of employment and funding all around, but it's, I don't, I don't think that we can simply offset this cost from another source, because I think there are going to be too many, too many expenses coming up and ongoing decreases in revenue. So if, if we're not willing to increase the rates enough to cover the expense of this contract, then I think the expense of the contract will have to be reduced. And I don't, I don't know that there is an option in, to reduce the expense anymore other than the composting. But I just, my, my personal feeling is that, that the, the city likely cannot afford to subsidize this or, or cover it out of other funds for, at, at least not for any significant period of time. Maybe, maybe through eased in over the remainder of this year. But going forward, I, I think we're going to be facing a lot more tough financial decisions. Thank you. Not, not a cheery comment, but that, that's what I've been waiting today.
Thank you, Member Grace. Any other council members? Mayor Patterson?
Thank you, Councilmember Crowe. Let me remind everyone that the garbage fund is a proprietary fund. Your, your rates are what fund that particular budget line, much like your water bill subsidizes, pays for the water delivery system. The sewer rate pays for your sewer system. So that said, Councilmember Reisner, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I get it. But to talk about, you know, you're being opposed to subsidy. If we ended up having to subsidize from the general fund, well, that's a subsidy, you know, if we're going to have to pay for this, and look, everyone has been saying other funding sources. I will share with council, that's bad practice, you know, to sit and start taking money from other funding to support a proprietary fund line. What I do say that I will do is go back to the drawing board and see what is the bare minimum we can get by between now and January 1. And then with the new budget, as we're sitting there putting that together, we can, I will sit down with council and work through what the budget will look like for 2021 and see if we can keep things as low as possible moving forward. But again, I, I can't stress this enough. I mean, to, to, when you're talking about not subsidizing from the, the garbage fund, but then subsidizing from somewhere else, not a good idea.
Can I reply?
Sure, Member Reisner.
Correctly if I'm wrong, but isn't the garbage fund already appropriated for this year, all the way to December 31st?
It is.
So that's $1,600,000 already there for this year. So if we put off raising the rates until January and raise them by a third of the proposed, it seems like there would be enough money to cover the, the new contract amount, which is $1,700,000. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
So essentially, we're trying to come up with $100,000 per year to cover the cost of the new contract. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
So it would be about $83,000 to cover the, the new contract until, for, for the contract itself.
I think like, if, if you work it right, it's doable. We can rob Peter and Paul.
And just to, you know, the comments online, I, I figured out how to read them. I just, I just saw the number below now, and see, can see how to read them. Is that at this time adding the composting to these additional services? At least the, the residents who have joined us today understand that the solid waste and recycling, the regular services, that there is a necessity of an increase there to pay for the contract, but that this is not the time to add composting. And I, and I hear, I, I hear, I think in the long run that curbside composting in Athens meets a lot of the goals that we, that we have as a city. And, but I understand that these are unique times and we certainly should consider if the mayors can go back and take a look at some things. We can go forward with all of these discussions and excellent comments from, from residents. Continue to discuss this as we move forward.
I do understand that there's some problems with the transmissions tonight and problems with people logging into Zoom. So please know that we've had our government channel technicians working on this for about the past 20, 25 minutes. And there's just a problem with the bandwidth tonight. We will be obviously accepting comments from citizens and are wanting to listen to those. So our emails are on the city website. And do you still have a comment, Mayor Patterson, about 6120?
I do not. I have something, though, that I want to go into before you get to announcements, please.
Okay. And Councilmember Crowe, are you ready for this to end?
Yeah, if there are no further comments, I'm done. Thank you, President Nisley.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Patterson?
President Nisley and Clerk of Council, I know this is unusual, and I'll admit that, but we are living in unusual times. Councilmember, or President Nisley, is it possible, even though it was the second reading and there are no comments, to go back to 5920? I received a text from Auditor Hecht, and she indicates that it should have been suspended this evening. So I just want to at least convey that to council for consideration.
I don't think that that's a possibility for tonight. We would, what we would have to do is a special session prior to our committee next week. Councilmember Grace?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I also received that request because they, the court is expected, expecting to receive those funds during this week. And the, the grant was awarded to them in order to allow them to do remote hearings. It's, it's equipment so that they can do hearings that are not in person. And so they would, would like to have that appropriation as soon as possible. I don't, I don't.
I don't think it's a possibility tonight. I see the law director shaking her head. So we will need to arrange as quickly as we can. Yeah, I had wondered about that. That's why I asked if it needed to be suspended. So, but we're past it now.
And I, I got the message just after we saw it, and I was like, oh.
Okay, so what we'll need to do is we'll need to make arrangements to find out from council members about a special session and probably also then allowing enough time that we advertise that we are having that meeting, because it needs to be advertised that it, and accessible to the public. So probably at least, what, 24 hours, once we give the notice out to the press. I, I apologize. I'm sorry that happened. Yeah. We'll work as fast as we can, and I know council members will try to be available. So we'll work through that. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to announcements and other business. We have a motion to accept the auditor's March 2020 financial reports, which were sent to all council members.
So moved?
Second.
We have motion at second for approval of the, or accepting these. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Okay, the reports have been accepted. Announcements that we will be having our committee meeting next week. And any other announcements about special sessions, if they occurred prior to that, will be announced to the press to accommodate that other ordinance that needed to be passed. Do we have other announcements? Councilmember Clodfelter?
Just an announcement to make people aware that the deadline to vote in the Ohio primary is coming right up. And that I'm, I personally am concerned that the people working at the Board of Election may get really swamped with, if things come in at the last minute. Especially if anybody still wants to request an application for a ballot. Those are available at Kroger stores in the lobby of the building to the left of the Board of Election. A, a copy of the application was printed in last Thursday's Athens News. Those are around. And there's a drop box of, one that's painted all red, white and blue and patriotic looking right by the rear entrance to the Board of Election. If you haven't yet submitted your application, you might take it to that box and put it in. That would be the quickest at this point. Because I'm just worried that with the time for an application to go in via the mail and then to get processed in the office, and then for a ballot to come back in the mail, and then for the ballot to go in again in the mail to be submitted, that some votes might not arrive before next Tuesday, April 28th. And people may get disenfranchised, just because, you know, with the way that the state legislature set this up and set a, set an election for April 28th as opposed to June 4th, when the Secretary of State wanted it. These deadlines are really tight. So I would encourage anyone who hasn't yet voted to really try to do so as soon as possible. And if you can make use of that drop box behind the Board of Election for either your application or your ballot, that doing that will make it much more likely that you will in fact be able to vote.
Thanks. Okay. Any other announcements? All right. We do have this final opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. And I am checking the website to see if there are any other chat comments that have come in. And I don't see any other than an update from our government channel director saying we'll have the recording of this available on the website by tomorrow morning. So by tomorrow. So thank you for your patience with this, and sorry for the technical difficulties. I don't think it was something that we could have done much about. We had it available, and we'll hope for a better transmission on our committee meeting night, and if we have that special session as well. All right, a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
And a second, I see. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, it's 8:26 PM. We'll see you all next week. Thank you.